Okay, this hearing is for a conditional use permit. Flood hazard conditional use permit submitted by Richard and Cheryl Temple, 101 Mountain View Road for a proposed 16 by 32 foot one car garage. The property is within the floodway fringe as defined in the Cavendish flood hazard regulations, which require a conditional use hearing with the Cavendish planning commission. Warnings were posted on April 18th on the town's website, posting board, board and the subject property. Abutting neighbors were warned via mail as well. So, the way we're gonna run the meeting is we'll have testimony from the landowner and then after that, we can have any questions, comments from the planning commission and then any questions or concerns or comments from the, from the public. So if you want to speak, I have to swear you in. So if anybody wishing to speak, if they can raise their right hand. Okay. Do you solemnly swear that the evidence you shall give relative to the cause that now under consideration shall be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay. Great, thank you. Alright, so, I guess we'll go ahead and, sir, if you want to kind of describe what you're proposing?
Yeah, basically, I'm proposing a 16 by 32 garage approximately feet off my house over to a fence that's adjoining the properties, similar to a garage that was there back in the early 1900s.
Okay. Are there any photographs of that, or?
Uh, yeah, I believe so.
Okay. Alright.
I don't have one with me, but I turned one in when I turned in the paperwork for the state and the.
Okay. We did do a site visit and we understand that there are some, there's really not a survey, nobody knows where the boundary lines are. I know you had hired a surveyor, they couldn't come up with anything.
Right. No records on either side or that they could come up with. They spent a lot of time down here at the town hall.
Mm-hmm.
And they went back as far as the road maps of the 1800s and still couldn't come up with any correct measurement to prove anything right or wrong.
Okay. Rick, do you have any comments, or?
No, we don't have any survey here. I don't, I didn't, who did you hire, or who did?
Who did? Gilmore? From Woodstock?
Yeah, we used him to do this property as well.
They spent about five months.
I'm surprised they couldn't come up with something. I don't know where the other.
They came up with lengths of property and measurements, but there's no way to determine where they start and stop. Basically, it was buildings there for a hundred years.
Okay. Any comments from the board?
You said there was a previous garage there at some point?
Yeah.
Is there some foundation stones or anything that's, that's left over from it?
Yeah, just a gravel base that was there.
That was there.
And the proposed building is up against the fence line?
Right.
Is that correct?
Right.
Okay. Patricky, do you have anything you'd like to say, sir, or ma'am?
I would like to officially submit this statement for public records and respectfully request the town officer to read aloud. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay. I'll go ahead and read this. My name is James Patricky?
Patricky.
Patricky, sorry. I would like to first thank everyone for allowing my written statement. I apologize in advance if it's long-winded. As some of you know, I have been afflicted with ALS and my speech is indiscernible. Back in the summer of 2001, my wife Martha and I traveled to Ludlow, Vermont to meet Jane Creaser of Ellison Real Estate in Ludlow, Vermont. Jane showed us a few houses and when we came to 131 Mountain View Ave., we made our decision. On October there in 2001, we finalized the purchase of our house and property at 131 Mountain View Avenue, Proctorsville, from Sonny Greneer. The law office we signed, the deeds were Birmingham &amp; Moore Law Practice in Ludlow, Vermont. I believe Darren Moore was the lawyer. Let me describe for you how the decision for our home selection came to be. First off, it was my desire to move to Vermont, not Martha's. I grew up on Long Island and aside from my four years in the Marines, lived there my whole life to that point. At work, one of my colleagues told me he really needed a vacation lest I drop dead from overwork. He suggested I go to Vermont. We took a week in Sunbury at a bed and breakfast farm and that was all it took. The weight was going to be on my wife, who after another rough day, month, year at work, yielded. Let me explain how I grew up in Long Island. All of the houses on my street were constructed exactly the same. The property lots were also the same except for corner lots. When we purchased our first home in the next town over, the same thing. The reason I tell you this is because during our Vermont search, I vowed not to have our neighbors right on top of us. The home we purchased offers us the perfect amount of property and its proper proportions. While I was not enamored with the house design, it afforded plenty of room inside and out for our family. What I was thrilled with was, is the location. First three rules of real estate, location, location, location. To the north of the property is directly bordering the Black River. To the east, our property, the property is on a dead end road and we are the dead end. Also, we have a spring fed stream that runs into the Black River at the point of our property. The next nearest house to the east is Jill's House on Pratt Hill, up a slight hill and across both the stream and the railroad tracks. To the south is the railroad tracks and Jeremiah and Kara Terrell's home. Their house is on the other section of Mountain View across the tracks with the Ripley home. The Terrell's house is not as close to the railroad tracks as ours, so there's quite a distance between Jeremiah's house and ours. And to the west is our new neighbors Rick and Cheryl Temple. The house was rebuilt a few years ago due to the original house owner at the time by Kelly Green had burned down. The new house as it currently sits is almost exactly placed in the same footprint as the original structure, lest the one car garage, which did not burn down but was torn down afterwards. Their garage door face was equal or very close to the same distance to the street as ours, give or take a few feet. Directly east of their driveway lies our split rail fence that also runs across the front side of our property, parallel with the road. While the garage was torn down, our split rail fence was not. This is significant. When Kevin Garafa was cleaning up after the fire, never did he approach me concerning the fence, especially when their garage being torn down. He made sure the fence remained and was undamaged. Never, never did he or Kelly nor Mark Thurston ever mention anything concerning the fence property line, nor did the new homeowners Ken and Betsy. I don't recall their last name, but I believe they may have been the landlords of Lemire Square in Ludlow. Again, apologies allowing me to provide more to our home purchasing decision. As I mentioned, Long Island housing, one distinctive feature to 131 Mountain View was the distance between our house and the neighbor's house. I said on many occasions, we could fit an entire house property in this space in Long Island. That thought was very appealing when we decided to purchase, it still is. While I'd like to consider myself sociable even in my present condition, the spacing is just perfect to provide the privacy, look and solace we have come to know and enjoy. Had the fence line been closer all those years ago, I'm not sure we would have bought our home. The split rail fence, I'm not a huge fan of fences anyway, provides a bit of country charm, but also clear definition. If there was any sort of fencing, this would be only one that I would accept. When Jane showed us this, we felt that Vermont charm. We have resided full time at this residence since the purchase. The property was sold last year to our current neighbors Rick and Cheryl Temple. Rick mentioned to me, he purchased the property sight unseen. Rick approached both my wife and I separately that he wanted to construct a garage. He said to Martha that he thought it might infringe with our split rail fence that divides our properties. He briefly mentioned to me, he spoke with Martha, not going into lengthy detail, and we were both trying to find a way to assist him. However, he later approached me individually and he brought up the discussion again, only this time, he brought an overhead property picture showing distances and he claims his property actually extends 25 feet onto our property and he would like to gain this land back. While we certainly would like to retain our new friends, neighbors, and Rick has been very nice about this issue, he mentioned to me he would like to start scheduling contractors. I went to the Cavendish Town Office and discussed with town manager Rick Chambers. We looked through some of our paperwork but could not locate the property survey. The town office also said they could not locate one, which I'm 99.99% certain I paid for when I purchased our home precisely for an instance such as this. We believe the last 23 and a half years assumption that the fence line, property line is true and much further back than that as Sonny Greneer would have not, would have not have sold the land with misrepresentation, nor Ellison Real Estate. And the town Cavendish recognized this. We spent years, and we spent years cultivating and managing that land, even buried one of the dogs there. Rick and I have had subsequent conversation on this topic, the last of which on April 25th. I informed him of our rejection of his claim and our intention to contest any town permit that would require construction on our property. He stated the possibility of needing to temporarily displacing a portion of the split rail fence to add cement footing should he replace the garage Kelly had in approximately the same footprint. I did not and do not have any objection to that. I would ask he repatriate the lilac trees we planted over there and even if on his property, the saplings were not easy digging up and planting and have reached the age where they bloom nicely. I even stated that we would be willing to give up a few feet so as they can enter, exit their one vehicle inside the one car garage comfortably. We left the in-person conversation at that point. Later that same afternoon, Rick texted me and asked what a few feet meant. I responded, maybe three, maybe five. I'm assuming this is Rick Temple? Okay. Three, maybe five, because we do not want to help them have a garage. I asked to see any drawings he has. He responded, if he went with a two car garage, he would require more like 10 or 12 feet. I didn't respond to his last text, but we opposed that amount. It would adversely alter our property overall look and feel. We spent time, energy and money throughout our time placing plants, burying one of the dogs, mowing, even raking and weeding that fence line. Martha even weeded when there was no house there, their side of the split rail fence. I also mowed their back lawn again when there was no house. We like Rick and Cheryl and as I stated, we're willing to accommodate a few feet, but we are opposed to any claim or subsequent construction that extends beyond the fence line without us agreeing, let's see, comma, three to five feet site drawings, end of quote, comma. Not sure how to legally attain that, maybe some sort of right of way clause. In closing, I would like to thank the town and board members for allowing me the time today. I hope Rick decides to dissolve his claim and revise his garage plan. We feel bad to lose our new friendship. Thank you, respectfully, James Patricky. Alright, very well written. So I guess the issue I see is nobody knows where the property line is. And my concern is, even though there is no zoning in town, there is a building permit, there is a setback, but it's not enforceable. Our concern, my concern is, I'm not speaking for the board, just myself, that if we approve this, and we don't know where the property line is, it could come back. Well, it could impact the town, it could impact both the neighbors. So, I don't know how other folks feel.
Yeah, I think you have to know where the property line is. That's, that's a given. It has to be established. There's liability here for us by allowing a permit and there's, there's potential issues down the road for your neighbors, yourself, could be legal issues. So I think you really have to find out where that property line is and.
Or agree on a new line.
Yes.
I don't know, Rick, do you have any? Oh, sorry. Go ahead, sir.
There's a stone marker on across the street from the fence.
It's like a square stone on the opposite side of the road.
Mm-hmm.
That's the mark.
That extends all the way down. We never put that in there, that thing's deep in the ground.
Does it go back? It goes back to the river, I guess?
There's only one.
Okay.
There's one stone on the other side of the road.
I don't know.
Was that the, I'm sorry, was that the marker that you, your engineer had referenced?
That's what I told you about, yeah. It's a piece of granite, second of granite, I thought was the railroad easement marker, but they just assumed it was the, and that's all they had to go by.
Did they confirm that that was a boundary line?
No.
Okay.
And there's no existing surveys of adjacent properties that your surveyor was able to take into consideration when he was mapping out your property lines?
There's a steel pin between 79 and 101, our house. It doesn't look like a survey property marker, but it's a steel pin that he assumed because it laid pretty much on the fence line on the other side. So they used that as the other side.
It's a steel pin, like a rebar, sort of?
Yeah, it's like a piece of, piece of angle iron.
That's what I have on my property in front and back is rebar. Rebar-like pin that sticks down into the ground.
Yeah, it's not, it's not actually rebar, it's a steel.
It's not exactly rebar, but it's.
It's a steel, yeah. It's right alongside a stone wall that was built there some years ago. So it's right on that wall and then there's a fence that runs down, because they used to have animals, I guess they're goats or dogs or something. And that runs down along that, our east property side, or west property side. So they measured across from that to the other fence and that's where they came up with a dimension that's in discrepancy with what I'm seeing on the tax maps and on the town maps, that's all. That's what I started.
And then, and your deeds, or I guess both of your deeds, are there any references to?
None.
Boundary lines and meets and bounds and?
Yeah, I have none in mind. There's no, there's no measurements or latitude, longitude lines. Just goes back to previous owners, back to the Thurstons.
I guess it was all part of one property you were mentioning at one point, so?
Yeah, it was all one parcel originally.
I guess that's pretty common back then, they just.
Our deed mentions nine rods.
I need a cushion.
Our deed mentions nine rods, from a reference point.
Do they know where the reference point is?
The stone.
All the stones.
It mentions another property.
Okay.
Rods could be lengths, measurements, actually your measurements, rods?
Right.
Or steel rods.
A rod, yeah. It's a measurement.
It's a measurement.
The length, yeah.
That's what the engineer told me, there's so many rods that run, you know, it used to be another building down at the east end of their property at one time, a ski shack or something that, all the way down at the point where the property is, so. But that was way, way long ago.
Okay. Is there anything else anybody would like to say? Rick, do you have any?
No, I mean, I, I just agree, I don't know how you'd give a permit with, I mean, the biggest thing is, like you, like you mentioned, those building permits are tough to enforce and it mentions so far off the property line, which is difficult and can't really do.
Right.
But as far as giving a permit to do a garage, you would just have to make, or any building, make sure that, you know, for one, it's on your property and two, any, like snow comes off, stays on the property. But knowing where that property is the key to everything, where that property line is.
Yes. Or a one to be established, yes.
Yeah, I think that's the approach, might have to be the agreed upon property line, like you were saying. Might be the easiest way without getting into big costs, because, I mean, I don't know if you join in and get surveys done of the adjacent properties, including yours, and going off those deeds and establishing points and then you're coming up with, you know, that's one way of doing it. But again, you're looking at multiple properties then and not just your property. So there's costs there too. So it might be easier just to start a dialogue again and try and come up an agreed upon property line and location and make it, make it work.
Because I'd give a building permits for fences and in those permits, I will say, I won't, I don't know where your property line is. I'm not gonna tell you, you know, I'm not gonna check to where the property line is. But if it's agreed upon with your neighbor, that's where a fence goes. Don't know if that was the case here, if it was agreed upon or just, I mean, I'm not sure.
I'd be, I'd be a lot more comfortable doing it with a fence, but a permanent structure is something that would definitely need to be.
Now, is there a way to fit that garage in without the snow coming down, using that fence as?
It would just make it narrower, yeah. Like, I was gonna, I was proposing to put the building line right on the fence line so there would be a one foot overhang which would dump snow 12 inches over onto the, the other side of the fence.
My offer as written still stands.
What's, what was that offer? Was that the?
Three to five feet.
Three to five feet.
Which is very generous.
Mm-hmm. I mean, if, if that was in writing, then you would, oh, well. Okay.
It seems like you have a couple of choices. One would be to accept his offer or to negotiate between 25 and 5, and between the two of you. Another one would be to hire the surveyors that he suggested and do all of the angles and that sort of thing. The cheaper one would, might be the former, but I'm not sure.
Well, if I put the property, the building on the fence line, all I need is the 12 inches for the snow.
So you, you two could.
I need to access the side of the garage for maintenance.
Right, so you can walk around and paint it if you need to.
Right.
I mean, I personally, I think it's still, I mean, this is great. None of us are lawyers, that I know of, just to have some sort of written agreement between the two that you both sign, that would, you know, we'd have to, you know, recess and discuss that, make sure it's, you know, okay. We just want to protect everybody, you know, the town and all of you, so.
Yeah, I think just a simple agreement with you guys on a piece of paper saying, you know, you know, this is where we're establishing the property, it's a foot over on the existing, we're considering the fence the property line, we're building the garage a foot over on the side and something very simple, just a.
And maintenance can be.
Maintenance can be, yeah, given a maintenance clause in there, just saying you can do maintenance on it. I think that would be the, the way to go.
Yeah, I'd be okay with that. How do you feel? Alright. Okay.
I mean, between the parties, if you agree on it, that's, that's the first step, as long as that's okay. I personally would feel better if it was in a, in a deed written and recorded here at the town and then there would be no question for future.
That's when it becomes legal, yeah.
You know? Which, you know, isn't terribly difficult to do.
You know, and the, and I'm just, I'm playing a little devil's advocate here, but if, if the agreement, if, if there is no agreement on the actual property line, you could still have an agreement to allow him to have the building there, as long as you're assuming that the fence is the border you want to consider and you say it's on this side of the fence, it's allowable and you have an agreement there, whether there's an easement, you know, a future easement needed for that or, you know, but that would be something that you, you know, you'd have to really think about.
Rick's property shows, property shows that you have a quarter acre more than, that you're paying taxes on, that you.
About a third of an acre more.
More.
Well, that's what I'm paying taxes on, so, but it's actually coming to a third of an acre less if we go by the fence lines.
Okay. Yeah, one thing I didn't consider is that whatever the agreement, it should be filed with the town?
Yeah.
Because if any of the properties change hands, you know, that information might not.
Has to live with him.
That's right.
Agreed as our intention is to turn the house and property to the children soon.
Lucky kids. Alright, is there any other discussion? We can, somebody can make a motion, I mean, we have, we could recess the hearing until we get the agreement. I don't know if that's the pleasure of the board.
What would our other option be besides just a recess?
Well, we could deny it or approve it.
You can approve it with saying that when.
Conditional approval.
Is recorded here at the town office, then you can go forward.
Yeah, we could do that.
So what was your wording?
Just when it's, when, when the written agreement is.
Is, has been recorded in the town office? Agreement between the two parties?
That would finalize, if you vote to approve it, that would kind of finalize the approval. But I mean, you, were you voting tonight to approve or?
I mean, typically, we recess, then we go into executive session, then we make a decision, so maybe that's.
There you go.
Yeah, I think so, if everybody feels that way. Alright, we just need a motion then.
Motion to recess?
Yep.
Second.
Recess the hearing, okay. Second.
Recess the hearing.
Alright, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion is passed, so we'll, as soon as, yeah, we'll, we'll go ahead and we'll recess and then once we get the, the agreement, maybe even before, we'll write that in the, the decision letter that you have to have an agreed upon letter and all that stuff. So, does that sound good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Motion to close, oh no, we recessed, never mind.
Aren't we going into session right now? We have to stop to.
Yeah, we have to stop, then we're gonna go.
You guys can use my office if you want to do, it's up to you.
Well, we're already 10 minutes late for the planning, maybe we can.
That's true.
We can do it after.
Yeah, we could do it after.
Let's do it after.
Sure. Yeah, so we're gonna recess the hearing and then we go on to a regular planning commission meeting. So you're all welcome to stay.
But you don't have to.
You don't have to.
But clarification for Rick, you're gonna have a written determination letter on this anyways, right?
Wait, say that again.
You're gonna have a written determination that you would, you would give Rick?
Yes.
On this, so.
Yep, yep.
So it would come back to another meeting?
Nope.
No?
Nope, I mean, if for some reason it got denied and you wanted to appeal it, then you could do that. Nope, I mean, if for some reason it got denied and you wanted to appeal it, then you could do that, so. But it seems like everybody's in agreement, so unless there's other issues that we haven't thought of, which is why we recessed the hearing, so. Okay.
I think the gentleman has something else he wants to send to us.
Could have the agreement. I know Rick wants to start. Any chance we could have the agreement verbally now?
Rick, he's, he's asking you a question.
Pardon me? What's, what's the agreement? You're calling the shots, so what's the agreement?
Oh, he wants, he says three to five feet.
All I need is access to walk around the garage, right?
Three to five feet, five feet?
Well, no. If he just needs.
Just a verbal in the open meeting versus having it written, so Rick can get started, that's kinda what he's. Is that what he's looking for?
I think so, but what are we thinking for decision time wise?
Quickly.
We just need to, we just need to meet and then, we're not talking a month, we're not talking even a week, we just need to discuss.
Yeah, you'll have an answer probably tomorrow.
If Rick needs a few feet better, if he just wants access, we want to help him.
Rick.
Yeah, so the three feet is for access, you're saying? So the, the wall of the garage would be on the fence. Is that correct?
Yeah.
That's okay.
Okay. All right. Excellent. Is there anything else?
So that, that's what we'll be discussing in, um, after our, after the meeting tonight. And he said you should have the answer probably by tomorrow.
We'll still have to write it out though and go through the town still.
Yes.
No, we have to write it out, has to be legal.
And signed by both parties.
Yep. But we'll discuss tonight based on what you guys discussed of having the garage on the property line, um, behind the fence, just right up against it. That's what we're gonna talk about.
Great.
Thank you.
For the record, can I get both of your names? I have.
Oh, I'm Sasha Petricki.
Sasha?
Yeah, S A, S H A.
Okay.
Martha Petricki.
And Martha, okay, thank you.
Where's TJ?
Chester, yeah, living with his girlfriend.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, we are gonna call the planning commission meeting to order. It's our regular meeting, Wednesday, May seventh, twenty twenty-five. Um, adjust agenda, are there any agenda adjustments? Approved meeting minutes, do everybody get the ones from the open forum? Did we get it?
So there's the meeting minutes from our last meeting, and then there's also the open forum notes, which aren't really minutes, right? Because that wasn't really an official meeting.
Right.
So I don't think we need to.
Yeah, that sounds right.
Approved?
Yeah, yeah, it wasn't, yeah, okay.
Did everyone get the minutes?
A while ago. Yeah, I did need them, then they looked okay, I don't know if anyone else. I mean, we could also approve them next month, if anybody feels like they wanna wait.
From our previous meeting minutes, yeah, I saw them a while back, but I didn't have any issues with them.
I don't have any issues.
Okay, uh, motion to approve?
I move that we approve the minutes of the last regular meeting.
Second.
Third.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, none opposed. Here's citizens, uh, we do not have any. Um, we'll go straight to item five, I hope she's still on Bambino University. Um, planning commission to review regarding compliance to town plan. Representatives from Bambino University will be on Zoom to discuss the proposal, so.
She was in the last one, but not this one.
Uh huh, okay.
Is that Nik- Nikita?
Nikita, yes. Uh, I did. Hopefully she can get back on, okay. You can get back on if you would like.
She needs to use the other link though.
Just use the other link to the regular planning commission meeting. Okay, so, um, they're proposing to do a daycare. I don't know a lot about it, I mean, I went through the Act two fifty, but it is in the, it's not in the floodway. Apparently, so. Um, and basically, uh, what they, they, they're going for an Act two fifty permit. And then it's criteria ten, does it comply to the town plan? That's basically, you know, we can write the district commissioner a letter saying it does or doesn't.
And they're already open, right? There's already kids there.
Is there?
Really?
Well, yeah, I, I saw, that's why I'm a little surprised we're doing this now. Because they opened April twenty-first supposedly. And, um, that's why I was kinda wondering, okay, what happened?
Oh, here she comes.
Here she comes.
Oh.
She'll ask.
Well, we'll ask, she's got a permit already, but good for her.
Fire marshal, inspector, all that stuff.
Well, that's different, yeah, that's, she's gotta get all that, that's not to us. Hi, Nikita?
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good, I apologize, our, um, our hearing, flood hazard hearing went over.
That's okay.
Yeah, but anyway, well, thanks for coming and, uh, did you receive your Act two fifty permit already?
We are still waiting, they keep sending things, it's been about two weeks now since I've heard anything from them, so.
Yeah, I did see stuff too, it, it is a complicated process. Um, so yeah, if you wouldn't mind, maybe just kind of, uh, explain what you guys are doing, what you wanna do and.
Okay, so, um, we're a nature-based early education center. It's great, it's been going great, we've been open for about two weeks. We have, um, the temporary snow fence up, which isn't ideal. Um, so we're keeping, um, our enrollments low because it's just not optimal to have a snow fence with, um, the number of children that we're licensed for. Um, the fence that we're proposing is exactly where the snow fence is. Um, a hundred and ten feet from the center line of one oh three are requested by V trans. Um, it'll be, I know there was some concern about, um, flooding and any fencing, holding water back or anything. So we have decided, uh, for a few reasons, A, we don't wanna do any damage to anything. And B, um, fencing's expensive and I don't wanna have to pay to replace it if anything should happen. Um, we're going to make it removable, um, a fencing that is, uh, the Gothic four-foot picket fence. Um, that will go on the posts, um, kinda hook on them so that they'll easily be able to be pulled off in the event there is a threat of a flood. Um, so that's not gonna be an issue for the town or for us on having to replace it. Um, we're not looking to alter anything here, we're just looking to keep our, our kids safe. Um, and be able to provide a much needed service to this area.
Okay, how, like how many students and ages and things like that?
We're licensed for forty-eight, um, and it ranges from six weeks to twelve years.
Okay, um, does anybody have any questions or anything?
Uh, I apologize, Nikita, is it, is this a, a school school or is this a daycare school or is it the, um?
We're considered a childcare, um, for six weeks up through twelve years. Um, we've already been through the fire marshal, we've gotten everything that we've needed. And we were licensed, we've had our license, um, for two weeks, we've been open for two weeks. Um, just, it's just the fence, that's the only thing we're waiting on.
Oh, did you, you got Act two fifty approval to start operating?
We didn't need Act two fifty to operate the building, we needed, um, fire, the fire marshal to approve the building.
Mm-hmm, so it's just, the Act two fifty then is just for the fence?
Just for the fence, and the, the temporary fence was approved by licensing, but we have a timeframe that it needs to, the real fence needs to go up. If we had known that this was gonna be an issue, we wouldn't have put the money and time that we've put into doing this.
Right, okay. Uh, one thing I did note, yeah, we, uh, we got correspondents from the state saying that you didn't address, um, the compliance with our town plan. So that's, I guess, why we're here tonight. Um, we can write a letter, the board decides to support the project. Um, also having approval from the planning commission, if you go for any grants. A lot of times they ask, you know, for, um, approval or from the town. So I didn't realize it's just for the, for the fence.
That's all as far as for the fence.
Yeah, everything's pre-existing, I mean, obviously there's enough parking. There's enough sewer and water, cause I think it was permitted for like over a hundred people.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, all of that's been approved, like through, um, the state, if, uh, every department has approved everything. It was, um, V trans had a problem about there not being access. But then that was grandfathered because there was no act, which kinda blew my mind, a restaurant's been here since nineteen ninety. So how is there no access to one oh three for, for all these businesses that have been here? Um, and like smoking bowls and meals and table nineteen, they had stuff way closer to, uh, one oh three than we are even remotely proposing. Um, so I don't know if they just never went through Act two fifty, if they never asked for anything and they just did whatever they wanted. It seems like we're kinda, we're doing things by the book and that's where we're, you know, kinda getting slammed.
Right, right. Okay, well, I know that part of, it, it, it's not, well, it's an issue for everybody. But that stretch of road is, people just really fly.
I've actually talked to, um, the state police and the sheriffs about that. Because I have staff, parents who like, don't know when to pull out because people are passing and you can't tell if they're passing and they're doing eighty miles an hour, no doubt. And they did tell me that they are, um, ramping up patrol over here because of, um, the numerous accidents within a two-week period in the Gulf. Which are definitely a part of the speed, but I, I expressed my concerns about this being a passing lane when there's several businesses here, there's, you know, large vehicles turning in next door, not here, but like next door. There's tractor trailers, there's a lot of customers at Grafton Cheese. This, it's a little crazy that it's a passing zone and you, you can't tell if somebody's passing. You've gotta be like super careful and get on the gas when you pull out because you might get clipped.
Right, uh, well, hopefully this'll instigate the town and the state, you know, even to put up those, you know, slowdown signs.
They're already on there.
Oh, good. So.
They did say that there was a proposal, um, for this stretcher road, but it's like, it's a process. Cause I had asked, like, is there a way to do like children at play now that there is a childcare center here? Like, if that was a possibility, I don't want my fence close to the road because I don't want my kids over there, you know, I.
Right.
I'm happy with it being close to the building like we are and going behind the building, we've got plenty of space. Um, but yeah, the cars are, I'm surprised nobody's ever come over that bank, honestly.
They have.
Have they? Yeah.
They've run right into the building.
No, like Black Rock.
Yes, okay, does anybody have any questions, comments? Um, how does, how do the members feel that we want to make a motion to support Bambino University? Saying that it does comply with our town plan or we wanna wait or?
What was specifically, um, when Act two fifty said it wasn't in our town plan, what was the, uh, what was the issue?
Uh, it was, uh, I think, Nikita, I think I read in your application that there, that we didn't have an adopted town plan, which we do. So I think that's all it.
Oh, that we, they wanted just to make sure that we.
Yes.
We agree, yeah, okay.
Right, they didn't comment, they, they ultimately make the decision whether it conforms to the town plan. Which they haven't decided that yet, but I think a letter from Musk goes a long way either way.
Yeah.
But, so.
I think it's, school's great, I'd support it.
Me, I would too.
Yeah, great, okay.
Thank you so much.
Or, we should probably make a motion, someone wants to do that.
Make a motion to pass.
Okay.
I'm second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? All right, great, so I'll write a letter, Nikita, I'll write a letter, uh, saying that the project does conform to the town plan. Um, may even throw something in there about the traffic, how the state should really do something.
That's in the works too.
Oh, it is, all right, well, then I don't have to.
It's for the intersection ahead, so it'll be.
Oh, are they, are they thinking about a traffic light?
They're thinking about a lot of things.
Good, good.
Would be long overdue.
It sure would.
It's gonna take a really long time.
Yeah, that's what I was told, like, don't expect it anytime soon, like, years.
Big deal, put a traffic light up. Okay.
Everything's a big deal now.
Yeah, I know.
Studies, to do studies.
Traffic studies, have over a long extended period of time.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, that's what it is.
Alrighty, well, I guess that's it.
Okay, are you Rick?
I'm sorry?
Are you Rick?
No, I'm Tim.
Tim, okay, hi, Tim. Trying to put faces to names and.
Yeah. Yep, yep, um.
Awesome.
Okay, well, look forward to, uh, I won't be sending any kids there, but my days are done. All right, well, thanks again.
So much.
Okay, thank you.
All right, bye-bye.
All right, so, item six, review and discuss subdivision forum. So what everybody think? Jason, he did make some minor amendments, I, did I send that out before?
He did.
Not just today?
Not today.
Oh, today. I didn't send it out before. Okay, sorry about that.
His his synapses was good.
Yes. So anybody, we want to discuss that or?
I did the notes. First off, Zoom was absolutely horrible. We didn't have the wifi from the fire department.
Okay.
Because we didn't have the password. So we had to use it from the school library.
Okay.
So.
And it was enough strong enough signal to work?
Not well, but yes.
Buffering issues.
So I was able to get a lot of it from the recording, but it was very difficult to hear what questions people were asking. I could not.
Who was asking them?
Who was asking them? I couldn't hear what they were asking. I could hear you all, but not not much. So feel free to fill in the blanks there, but I know Ralph had a comment about just a
The legality.
Something and I didn't under I didn't I couldn't hear him. So
It was some punctuation stuff.
Something about bylaws or something and I so hopefully that was changed. Jason changed that maybe.
Yeah, I think he would. They were kind of referring setbacks. I think he took the word setbacks.
Yeah, that was that was one of them for sure.
Sort of a zoning thing, zoning terminology. I mean, we don't have any physical setbacks in the subdivision regulations. So. I mean, I guess we need to think about it.
It was, yep. I think he made some comments about the building permit not being enforceable. And then he made comments on there was some language that was being used that he said, we're walking a thin line on some of the language because that could arise some problems and I don't.
Was that the three and the two and the two?
He did actually. Yes. And Jason changed that.
Because that still bothered me about the the definition.
It bothered me. Yeah, I, you know, just had to get it.
Yeah.
Right.
So that's good.
Yeah. I mean, overall, I think it, you know, went well.
I think so.
I think it was.
People were more comfortable this time to have a discussion and not be too anxious about it.
Right, yeah, right.
I think the driveway was in was the driveway steepness was you know, something that was contended for a little bit, but I think it was more just understanding that that waiver really does cover anything. If you have a specific driveway that you just can't make that pitch and it's hindering you, but it's not really going to hinder the, you know, the roadway or the people around you. Like, just put a waiver in and we can take a look at that. I think that's the if it meets, you know, if it's not in that fifteen percent, if it's sixteen percent or
Right.
You know, like, okay, we'll just take that consideration. I think that was, you know.
Or if it's a short section or, you know, if it's if it's something we think we need the fire department or ambulance look at.
Well, I mean, that's sort of also another point Ralph made is have the fire services make those decisions if they're going to service those homes or not and have them sign off on it. If you're going to build a driveway like this,
Right.
That's great. You've got a great view, but
Yep.
Good luck.
And that could be something that when they come in and they do their sketch plan review and we say, hey, did you take a grading of that driveway? What's and they say, oh, it's it's whole hire. Okay, well, let's let's we're going to hold put this on hold and we're going to bring in, you know, Cavendish Fire or Proxville whoever soon and say, come in, take a look at it. If they sign off on it and they say it's okay, then we're okay.
Sure.
You know, so we can always default to that.
Can we incorporate that maybe?
We could.
We could talk to what's his name?
Bob Glidden?
Bob.
No, in 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 Windsor.
Jason.
Yes, Jason. His name went out of my head.
I mean, yeah, I mean, one thing, if you think the fire department would sign off, would they want that liability?
Well, maybe.
They could advise they could advise us on whether to approve or disapprove.
Make that a mandate and just say, we can if we feel that's a rise in the meeting and say, hey, listen, we feel more comfortable to have Bob Glidden come over and take a look at it or Becky to come over and take a look at it. Get the trucks out and they sign off on it. Okay. If not, if you're okay with them signing off and saying we are not providing emergency services to it, then we can go that route too. But making a mandate might be.
Yeah, it could be part of the process rather than maybe it's part of the driveway permit process, which wouldn't have anything to do with this document.
Right.
That would be more through the select board.
Well, I mean, the driveway is only that it's only when they enter the town right away. So if the road was steeper, you know, further up.
Yeah, I guess that wouldn't.
Yeah, it would only be like the last twenty five feet or thirty feet.
Right, yeah, right. Twenty five feet probably.
A homeowner is taking on quite a bit of responsibility if you build a road that cannot be protected and and a fire or something goes up to other neighbors. I mean, that's a big hit for for your own. I mean, an insurance company should have a say in that too, right?
And can the fire department, can they deny service? I don't know even.
And they can get as far as they can and then not any further.
I don't think they I don't think they can. I think they have to provide service. What they'll do is they'll bring the trucks up the road and and piggyback them and they'll fight. They'll bring the hoses up the driveway. They may not be able to bring the truck up the driveway. An ambulance might not be able to get the driveway, but they'll have emergencies. They'll still be able to certainly give them emergency services. It just won't be the normal route of getting the truck as close as possible.
Right.
You know, it'll have to be from the road if they can't get up it.
Right.
You know.
I mean, and if it's for a big over five lot subdivision, it's going to go through act two fifty.
And they have to.
They have to. Yeah, they've got the municipal impact form and all that. So.
So I'm satisfied that if if Jason looked at this and he's thinking that we're good. I think we're good.
Yep, we did. I talked to him the Monday or Tuesday yesterday. We did discuss it'd probably be good if when we if when it went to the select board hearing, the select board, if they chose to have have it looked at by a legal counsel.
So that's their decision.
Do you have a copy with all of the revisions? Because I knew that was brought up too.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
See the Google Doc with all of it.
Yeah.
Since October of twenty two.
Latest draft. I think that's what he sent us.
Yes.
The one that you forwarded today had all the revisions, but it doesn't have the revisions from when it started out as an eighty seven.
He doesn't have a document that has all the different red lines.
I have them. I mean, we can I offered to send one to him and he didn't.
From the beginning to now.
We do is we have each one of those documents and just date it and save that title and just put ten different documents down with the date on and say, this was the first. And now maybe that way we don't have to combine them and try and combine all the edits in one. That'd be a mess.
This is, yeah, because we already have two edits in here.
Sure.
So. So.
And then they can post it on the website, right?
Yeah.
Something.
And Shannon just said, I don't know if you heard her, but maybe this copy gets posted because it shows the revisions and it also shows.
Oh, that they were addressed it from the last from the that's a great idea.
Yeah. And then just let people know that, hey.
Yeah, we did look at it and make decisions.
So we basically put this one out to the public with the
With the color coded revision.
Color coded, yeah. But the town, I mean, that's fine. We'd have to get them copied somewhere else because the town doesn't have a color copier. So.
So should we?
We can do that.
Should we do the clean version as well separately? And then the edited version, just so I feel like some people would look at the red lines and everything and be confused on what they're reading. If they've never read a red line copy before, they could get confused on the lane and what's happening. So maybe we just have an official clean copy for them to have when they're before the just have that one listed as edited drafts. So it's it's very clear that, you know, when somebody's opening it up, they know, oh, this is the this is an edited version.
Which is what's up. You have the the clean version.
The clean version, right.
Yeah.
That sounds fair.
Just make it real clear that, hey, this is not the action. This is the edited.
Is the requirement that, you know, obviously, we, you know, we need to save all of this data in the notes and everything like that. But is it an actual requirement to have the red line stuff on the website?
I think it has to be available is what they were saying.
Okay.
So it does. I don't know if that means it has to be on the website or if it just has to be copies here and they can come in and get a copy of the draft versions. As long as it's available.
Right. I think if we post the ones with the revisions on the website, that way we don't have to copy them and then have the like this. Well, I guess this is the latest. Okay, he highlighted in yellow. So, yeah, these have all the revisions.
He did. He did. He's got yellow and red on there.
Yes, yep.
So that's good.
Yeah.
That's good. Maybe just post that one and then we'll keep the, you know.
Yeah, and you can maybe just when you title it with edits.
With edits.
Yes.
Then you just open whatever one you want to look at.
Yeah.
Right, yep. And then we'll have hard copies of the official draft
Yeah.
available here. Okay. We can do that.
That's a good plan.
Yeah, yeah, that's good. Because then you have some, you know, they don't they don't need to run all those copies.
Yeah, you don't want to waste a paper too, because you're going to print them all out and then you might only have two people that come up and actually look for the draft.
You can order a copy.
Right. So then.
With latte.
Yeah, kind of talking about like what's next. At some point, we need to feel comfortable to push it ahead to planning commission hearings. And then it goes to select board unless, I mean, nobody ever comes to the planning commission hearings. Every as long as I've been on, like, you might have two people show up, but then the select board, everybody shows up. So that's fine. So time wide timeline wise, I mean, if we want to push it for a public vote, that's in March. I mean, we kind of have to get going.
I think we just keep pushing. Just keep our instead of delaying, holding back, I think we need to move forward.
June, because you guys don't meet in July.
Well, no, we August typically we go. We could do one in June. I would say July would be the latest because
Yeah.
Because we want to get it to the select board before their budget, like in October, November.
Yep.
November, the latest.
Not giving them enough time to to think about it.
Did we say we were going to have one more open forum?
Nope.
That we didn't. We didn't. We didn't discuss that at the last. That wasn't something we talked about. Okay. In my head, I thought maybe we mentioned that. So we don't have to go for an open forum again. We can just now put this right on for
Yeah.
A planning commission.
Hearing, which is basically the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's still spring. I suggest we keep going because people are going on vacation this summer. But that's just my
Yeah, I do it in June before everybody's
Oh, right.
Gone for the summer.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's put it on the next one.
All right.
But I don't really get a say. Schedule it.
Yeah.
Put it on the next one.
We should make a motion to accept the draft.
I so move.
Second.
It's him and me.
Yep.
Okay, any discussion?
Good job, Jason.
Yeah. All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so we'll we'll get that going. They'll have our hearing and I mean, personally, yeah, I'd like I just want to get it because the longer we wait, it's just going to dwell on it.
Let's rip this Band-Aid off and see.
Can we do a hearing just like we did today for our regular meeting?
Yeah.
Set it up for the
Yeah, that first Wednesday.
June fourth.
I think I gotta look at the, I don't know if it's thirty days warning or fifteen.
Yeah, because you're not.
If it's thirty, then we'd have to push it to the following week at least.
Or you just Why don't we push our meeting back?
Yeah, we could do the meeting.
You could do it on the eleventh.
Yeah, we could have our planning commission and that.
And just instead of the first Wednesday.
So we can have it on the eleventh?
The eleventh, yeah.
If that's the case, I'd let me let me look at that. It might only be fifteen. So. All right. Awesome. That's good. That'll be good to get this.
Go on to the next.
Get it out of there. Yeah. Give it to the select board.
And let them.
Sorry.
Well, you guys just push it to a vote, you know, a town vote and see what happens.
But it did. I think it was overall was compared to the last open forum
Yes.
Last year, it was much
Much more continual.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, there was a lot less vocal opinions on it.
Less tension.
Yeah.
And they were different, different people too.
Yeah, opinions that did come out, there weren't anything detrimental to it. I don't think it was anything that was like a, you know.
No.
They were completely against, so.
And, you know, after talking to the town office, I mean, there's like houses being built that I guess nobody, I mean, they come in after, but they start construction, then they come into the town or they just building driveways and roads and nobody knows what's going on.
Has the reputation that anything goes.
I mean, that's great, but what's all that affects your property? I mean, that's it. It's a good thing about Cavendish is that it's do what you want, but I don't know. We'll see. All right. Old business, new business. Anybody have anything?
I have an apology. Because we had set the meeting for six thirty and I printed everything for six o'clock for the open forum, which is why we were late.
Oh.
Yes.
And that's why that's why Bruce.
Bruce came in and
We agreed six thirty and then when I printed the postcards and everything said six o'clock and everybody said, yep, looks good. I'm like, all right. So I totally missed it.
Well.
Because I
I had it in my calendar at six thirty, but I says, and I thought I was blaming myself. I was like, I must have wrote this down wrong.
I read it earlier and I was like, oh, it's early. Yeah.
But I did catch it and I did get here on time because I saw I had the flyer that morning and showed it in my mailbox and I was like, oh, it's six. Okay.
Which was another issue.
Oh, some, yeah, some people, yeah, they said it came in that day.
They didn't send it out for like four days. Because Miguel wasn't here and I did address it.
Miguel was out of town.
Okay.
But anyways. Sorry.
No, that's fine. We all missed it.
I think we had twelve people on Zoom and there was quite a few in the room.
Yep.
It's good.
It's good.
And we didn't have anybody on Zoom ask questions though, did we?
No. They had some comments.
Impossible.
Yeah. I told them it was difficult. I did tell them if they had questions to put it in the chat.
Yeah, and and nobody put any up.
All right. I don't have any correspondence. Is anything else anybody wants to talk about?
Just for my own, do we have any roadwork happening this summer?
Yes.
We do. Where exactly?
Paving, Quenfalan and Depot Street from one oh three to somewhere. I don't know how far down they're coming.
Okay.
If they're going to.
Luggles got a lot going on.
But yeah, we don't have dates.
I didn't know if we were also in that that realm of getting something major happening.
We don't have dates yet.
So Quenfalan's the big one and then Depot.
Yep. Yeah, Quenfalan was in horrible shape last fall. So.
What's the next ones on the list after that?
Oh, yeah, Shannon, you should anything big on the select board you could share with us?
Paving.
Paving.
Always a big one.
Okay.
So, yeah, we have just those two for this year. That's kind of the end of the money.
Yeah, so next summer.